Sarah.
Yes.
What?
Yes ma'am.
Justin.
Yes.
Erin.
Yes.
Bob, are we live? Does that have anything? Nope. Considerous discussion of possible action to approve change order number one to the C's construction project with Kearns Construction for Kirk Avenue improvements.
Last meeting, I was asked to prepare a change order for time to reconcile the issues we had with utility delays and, you know, weather. And so, we put together, I think it's in the packet, our log. And this includes the AT&amp;T work stoppage, the weather allowances, and then additional water lines that we found that had to be moved out of the way. We have additional excavation, the ditch in the park there that we gave a little bit of time for, recommending time. And then, from time to time, we have to have plant clarifications which require time from the engineer and the contractor to work out field issues as we, you know, tie-in points, elevations not always being exactly achievable or, you know, we're working with really large equipment and putting in decimal places for inches that they have to meet. So sometimes we run into issues and that has, let's take a little bit of time because we have to come out and verify it with our surveyor versus their surveyor, as well as material delays. In Phase Two, we had an issue at the plant which required a delivery of a specialized chain. This meant it had to come from another state and it took some time to get that. So we gave a little bit of allowance there, as well as, in this last phase for the CKD, we had some issues with the mixer and that took a little bit of time to get a new tire for it. I'm here to answer any questions. We're recommending a total of 351 days on a project that was a 240 calendar day project. It's us out to May 1st, which is really right around the corner. We still have Phase Three and Four to complete meeting.
Anybody have anything?
Does this meet with, does this fit inside the contract? That was the question I was, so, last week, or last week.
Did you ask that question?
Yes, I'm asking. I asked the question about does, do we need amendment to the contract?
Okay.
Is this change order then suffice?
That's funny because that was what I was, no, I was just going, that's what I kept saying, I need to see the contract. I, and I think we've talked about that. I reviewed the contract. The contract refers to the specs. The specs refers to an ODOT section for calculating damages, delay days, damages delay days. And that's something that I always look for in this type of transaction because sometimes the contract has its own provisions and it doesn't like the ODOT spec and they conflict and you end up in litigation. I can give you the case number. So, I believe he's calculated it correctly. I don't see anything from a legal perspective that's a problem, but I always look at that.
No, we tried to disclude what you're talking about and just either pick one or the other ODOT for, you know, typical city jobs, but this is more of a roadway and follows more the ODOT guidelines and so that's what we chose, is the ODOT guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
Even that has some discretion or flexibility in interpretation and we, and we want to be generous, but we also want to get the project done, so. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I guess I just want to say, I noticed the last delay when they were missing the part is very understandable because it was my understanding it was coming out of Kentucky and it was during when they had that huge tornado. And I think any of us that live in Oklahoma should be understanding of the disaster that can happen. And so, you know, there's other things that are in play that we need to remember.
Yeah, I appreciate that and they worked very diligently to get that. I mean, we all worked pretty hard together as we were having some water issues too. It didn't always go as planned when we shut down the water, shut down the whole town. But I think we've learned a lot about that corridor.
So have I.
Anybody else have anything? I'll make the motion to accept the change order.
Second.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Erin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Erin?
It's no worries, you'll open it up.
Considerous discussion of possible action to approve Kearns Construction Contractor Pay Application 15 out of 107,329, point 14 for Kirk Avenue Project funded by the General Obligation Bond on the April 2nd, 2019 election.
This payment includes some excavation in Phase Three, sawing to finish out some of Phase Two, as well as drainage structures, water line lowerings, some removal of structures, removal of existing drainage pipes under driveways and some signage removal as well as some piping for just the drainage. And we are recommending approval to date.
Do we have anything? Motion to approve.
One second.
Erin?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor? Justin?
Yes.
Autumn? Yes ma'am.
Considerous discussion of possible action to approve Rural Economic Reap Grant Contract in Central Oklahoma Economic Development District for Project RV Lift Station.
This is the contract for the reap grant that was awarded in the amount of $50,000 to be put towards the bids that you're going to open later. It's pretty standard. I mean, it's same thing we do every year when we get it. Unless Tammy has something different.
Pretty standard.
Anybody have any questions? I'd all make the motion to accept.
Second. Mayor?
Yes.
Autumn? Yes ma'am.
Sarah? Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Considerous discussion of possible action to open bids to RV Lift Station Project to be partially funded by the reap grant awarded in the 10th, 21. So, do we need an actual motion to open the bids or we just open the bids?
I don't think we need a special motion.
That's what I thought.
Just have to do it.
Should have asked for a-
Drum roll maybe.
So do you want me to take them and open them here or? There's going to be two alternates, so we're looking for two.
Have the mayor open them is generally what we do.
Okay, that's fine. So you'll be reading a base, an alternate one, and an alternate two.
Okay.
You said we have 10 bids? That's pretty unbelievable.
That was pretty-
We've had since I've been here. Anything?
I think that's good.
All that thought is-
Take the heck out of that.
I have the Band-Aid when-
I might need it.
I have Band-Aids too.
You gave me the biggest knife.
No.
Really, just one of the 11.
Toss the contractor name while-
Front here? Sunrise Construction LLC out of U. Falla.
Who was the promo, sorry?
Sunrise.
Sunrise Construction. See, there's a base and you said two alternates?
Yes. And it should just, whenever you find the base, it should be the next page for the-
Okay, total base bids, 134,610. Total Alt. 1 was 6,500. Total Alt. 2 is 25,200.
You might need some oxygen.
All right. Orr Construction, Davenport, Oklahoma.
You said Orr.
O-R-R. All right, base, 174,906. Alt. 1 is 13,000 even. Alt. 2 is 15,000 even.
1-5?
1-5. Baco, Sepulpa. All right, assuming it's a tab, there's a tab here, maybe it's for this tab. All right, base, 105,645. Alt. 1 is 4,960. Alternate 2 is 8,792. Downey Contracting LLC out of Oklahoma City. Base, 219,364. Alternate 1, 7,100. Alternate 2, 37,903. Howard Construction, Ardwood.
Is that Howard, A-R-D?
Yes.
Yeah, H-O-W-A-R-D. Base is 228,500. Alt. 1 is 10,000 even. Alt. 2 is 45,000.
You're halfway through, congratulations.
Is everybody still paying attention? I'm sure the contractors are. Utility Field Services LLC from Chandler. Base, 155,202.69. 155,202.269. Alt. 1, 9,775. Alt. 2, 23,351.20. Quicksilver Utility Contracting LLC, Wellston.
Utility Contract-
Can you read it again? Got it?
Got it, thank you.
All right. Base, 113,825. Alternate 1 is 12,000. Alternate 2 is 22,500.
Excuse me. I don't know.
Give me some water?
Sarah, I'm fine, I don't know where that came from.
Young Contracting from Oklahoma City. Base, 182,840. Alt. 1 is 11,000. Number 2 is 36,200. Boyd Construction.
What was it?
Boyd Construction. I think that's Chakota.
She's a B-O-Y-D mayor, Boyd.
B-O-Y-D, yes. Base, 163,370. Alternate 1, 10,280. Alternate 2 is 23,500. KBC Construction, Broken Arrow. Right, base, 176,220. Alternate 1, 9,000. Alternate 2, 25,200. That's all of them. All right, consideration discussion of possible action to award bid for the RV Lift Station Project. We're actually going to table this till next time and these are going to go Michael, so I guess I can give them to you after the meeting. And he'll review them and make sure everything is where it needs to be and give us her recommendation. So. All right, consideration discussion, possible action to approve contract with Michael Green CPA, the amount not to exceed 18,450 for preliminary work and to audit, prepare financial statements for the year, June 30th, 2020. Is he here?
He's not able to be here.
We're not able to be here? How long, is this the third or fourth year?
This will be the third year, I believe.
Reviews them? So I don't know if anybody has any questions or anything. It's pretty straightforward, I think it's probably the same contracts as we have.
Actually, the price went down $500 this year.
Oh, wow. I guess he likes this, I don't know.
Maybe.
Anybody have any questions or anything? No? I'll make the motion to accept.
One second. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Autumn? Yes ma'am.
Erin?
Yes.
Considerous discussion of possible action to approve City of Perkins Workplace Wellness Policy.
Melinda Caldwell from TSET, the Tobacco Settlement and Downwind Trust, is here to speak on this matter. We've been working with her.
You get to be front and center.
Joy, good evening, Commission. Like Bob said, my name is Melinda Caldwell, I'm with OSU Community Wellness. I work on a grant called the TSET Healthy Living Program. And essentially, what our grant does, we're funded by TISA, is looking at a public health policy and environmental strategies to make communities healthier. So we're funded specifically to do that here in Payne County. So like Bob mentioned, we've been partnering really with the City of Perkins for, even in our previous grant, over five, about five years now. And so, essentially what this wellness policy is looking at is a lot of things that either municipal staff with the City of Perkins is either already doing or extremely easy to implement and low cost or no cost to implement. Again, this provides sustainability and shows the support for wellness and being healthy and health in the community, but also it lays the groundwork for potential funding opportunities for the City of Perkins. So there are some grants from TISA out there that policies for amenability or the organizing government to apply needs to have in place. This is one of those policies. So the first grant opportunity is, the RFP is due March 15th, I believe, and it's up to $350,000 for a built environment, so sidewalks, trails, things like that, that the City of Perkins could apply for if they had this policy in place, in addition to a tobacco-free municipal staff policy. Happy to answer any questions at this time in regards to the workplace wellness policy.
Again, thank you for coming.
Yeah, of course.
Anybody have any questions? No? All right, well, I'll make the motion to-
Staff recommends approval.
Yeah. You what?
Staff recommends approval.
Okay.
Second. Mayor?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes ma'am.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Considerous discussion of possible action to approve, City of Perkins Tobacco-Free and Vapor-Free Work Site Policy for Municipal Property.
So as previously mentioned, this is the second half, in addition to the Workplace Wellness Policy, that is required to have to apply for grant. This is a policy that essentially the City of Perkins already had in place, but really kind of fine-tuning it, bringing it up to speed with vapor products and adding in some loopholes that were there previously. I should add to that enforcement of this policy is up to the city. So, different policies I know are enforced differently. And this policy also, has also been passed, this and the wellness policy, by other communities too. So City of Yale passed this policy within the last two years, City of Blackwell, City of Tonkuan, New Kirk as well. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions. As far as the signage involved in this policy, we can provide signage if the policy's passed as is, so that's not a cost to the city at all.
We, basically, we have, I don't know, 80% of this already on the books now. It was resisted when City owned Red Bud Assisted Living, because that would mean a resident there wouldn't have been able to smoke. And if you're at that stage in your life and you want to smoke, people felt like you ought to be able to smoke outside the building. So, now we no longer are in that position.
Anybody have any questions on it?
Making motion to approve? Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes ma'am.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Justin?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Considerous discussion, review of the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, OMAG Liability Policy Declarations and Exclamation of Coverage Page.
We have a short video from OMAG, they were unable to be here. But this will kind of go over instead of listening to me read it to you. Suzie Paulson is listed as the General Counsel for OMAG in this video, she's now the Director of OMAG.
Hello, I'm Suzie Paulson, General Counsel for the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, or OMAG, and this is Understanding Your Declarations Page. The Municipal Liability Protection Plan declarations page, often abbreviated as DEC page, is an overview of your coverages and limits for your city or town. Listed at the top of the page is the plan member information. Typically, this is the city or town. On occasion, it may be a city trust or authority if that entity has chosen to have their own policy. Each member will also have an agreement number that will start with the letters G-L-A and be followed by a string of numbers. This is a unique identifier that is only associated with your specific plan. In addition, each plan has a plan period. This period lists the effective dates of the policy. General liability covers eight areas: bodily injury, property damage, personal injury, errors and omissions, pollution damage, defense reimbursement, cyber data breach, and- errors and omissions, pollution damage, defense reimbursement, cyber data breach, and uncovered employment defense. Each of these have been organized by a letter to help differentiate the coverages. So let's look at each of these separately, starting with general liability coverage A, bodily injury. This coverage accounts for claims with an actual medical injury, or the claimant has sought medical treatment from a doctor. Coverage B is property damage, and includes any physical damage to property. Coverage C is personal injury and includes emotional distress, inconvenience, annoyance, et cetera. Coverage D is errors and omissions, and includes any errors or breach of duties by any plan member or its employees. Continuing with general liability, let's jump to coverage I, pollution damage. This covers damages to property which are caused by a pollution incident under certain conditions. Coverage J is defense reimbursement for inverse condemnation and zoning cases. In these cases, the city can be reimbursed up to ten thousand dollars for expenses that are incurred defending an inverse condemnation or zoning case. Coverage K is cyber data breach coverage that is provided by O-MAG through our partners at Beasley. Unlike the other coverages mentioned, coverage K has a separate policy document. Coverage L is a defense-only coverage for certain employment cases such as the Family Medical Leave Act, or FMLA, the Oklahoma Anti-Discrimination Act, or OADA, and certain workers' comp retaliation claims. O-MAG offers auto liability and auto and equipment physical damage coverage. Auto liability, coverage E and F, covers bodily injury, personal injury, and property damage. Coverages G and H cover any auto or equipment physical damage. O-MAG's limits of liability follow the Oklahoma Governmental Tort Claims Act, which is twenty-five thousand dollars for property damage and a one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for personal injury, bodily injury, and errors or omissions. As General Counsel of O-MAG, I am confident that the coverages O-MAG provides have you properly covered with the appropriate limits. If you would like additional information, visit the O-MAG website or contact the O-MAG Member Services Department.
Thank you. The reason that we are asking you guys to do that is 'cause that is one of the four requirements for O-MAG's recognition program. And we thought that we'd go ahead and get that off the plate, 'cause you have still a lot of items on the plate. Thank you.
Is that, we just need, is there anything we need to do from here, other than?
That was the requirement, was just that you review it.
Okay.
I believe we've complied.
Thank you. Uh, consideration discussion, a possible action regarding the hiring of a city attorney and/or city prosecutor. We're all looking at you.
Yes, at me. Okay, my contract was for six, is for six months, um, which expires, I believe, at the end of March. Um, you'll need to do something at your March meeting. It's as interim city attorney. What I've proposed to these two, um, as an option, well, let me just say, I love you guys, and I really appreciate all of the hard work that you've done in the last, all of you, I mean, just everyone. It's just an amazing, amazing city, and I do have some comparisons, so, um, I don't say that without meaning it. But, um, so I would be glad to continue to provide services. However, you haven't hired a city attorney in twenty years, and so, um, one of the things that Rachel and I talked about months ago was the process of interviewing and, um, advertising, and I gave her some ideas and thoughts, and, um, but because of, of all that has been going on, and we haven't quite gotten around to that, and, um, it's budget time, Rachel's busy. So one of the things that I suggested is, as an option, is to extend my interim contract for another three to six months, or however long you want to do it. To give you time then to go ahead and advertise and, um, and interview and do whatever, you know, you want to do, and take it from there, because you really just haven't had enough time, in my opinion, to get, to get through that process. And a month is not going to be enough to get through that process. I also, uh, think that you might wanna consider dividing the job up. It's been the same, um, your city attorney and your prosecutor. That person can be the same person, no problem with that, or it can be two different people. I think it's always good when it's two people, and I'll, I say that from experience because I actually worked, I, during what I call my mommy years, I was a substitute prosecutor. I was a prosecutor or substitute prosecutor, or substitute judge or judge in ten different metro Denver cities, over about a six-year period. And so I worked with a lot of municipal courts, and, um, when you're, when you have a city attorney who's a different person from your prosecutor, it gives the prosecutor and the judge, or in our case, judges, someone to complain to. Because there, the interaction between prosecutor and judge can be, can be difficult. I, I haven't seen that here, I'm just saying generally. If, if you have a prosecutor with issues, the judge then can go to the city attorney and say, "I have these issues," or if you've got a prosecutor complaining about a judge, you've got that interim, interim, interim person, intervening person who can kind of deal with it. I've seen that play out, and I think it's not a bad idea. It also, if you've got a city attorney who actually has done prosecution and understands it, and I say that because I've dealt with cities that didn't, um, but if you do have a pro, a city attorney who understands it, then you also have someone who can back up and substitute for your prosecutor. Your prosecutor, if they're qualified, can substitute for the city attorney for other things, so it gives you a little bit of a bench. I'm willing to continue to do the prosecution, but I think you can, you can find someone locally who's qualified to do that, who would probably, um, if not charge you less an hour, at least be local, and you wouldn't be paying travel time, because you are paying travel time for me. So what I had suggested, again, months ago, um, was that you, if you advertised the job, that you advertise it as two separate positions that can be applied, that both can be applied for by the same person. If that makes sense? Like, one person could apply for both positions, or if you've just got someone who says, "I'm, I've been a DA, I know how to prosecute, I wanna apply for that position," they can do that, and that gives you a little more flexibility. Sorry? You're the ones who direct them how you want to proceed.
I think it's also important to note that the law doesn't require for professional service going out to, doing an RFP, or, it's not like a bid process for what we just, for what you just did, so.
Professional engineers.
You don't have to.
Your, your auditor. Yeah.
So if we don't have to advertise, can the commission then extend an offer to the interim attorney? Is that what I'm reading? Is that my understanding?
Yes, that could be done.
So to the commission, I'd just like to let you know that I've been in contact with a, um, an assistant city attorney and prosecutor who's very experienced and has very clearly indicated he would be interested in being a city prosecutor for Perkins, and he is local, and, so, I just tossed that out there. I thought it was, um, it's somebody that I've dealt with before, and I, I know him and respect him, and so, I just thought I'd toss it out to the commission and let you be aware of that, and.
Well, I think Bob, Bob has said that he knows someone who may want to be prosecutor. He only knows someone who, who may be.
Maybe several people.
Certain attorney, um.
But, but, yeah.
That may be something to take, uh, Mr.
And we could certainly advertise that, I mean, I don't have a problem with advertising or what have you, I just, I mean, obviously, there's some interest. The, the one person I contacted said, "Yes, sir, I'd love to do that," so.
Well, and the person I contacted said, "I'd love to do it, but I wanna retire," so.
Priorities, I guess.
So anyway, no, I mean.
So how does the interview process work? Because we have to have a meeting if we're all gonna be at the same place at the same time, so is that something that I need to do individually?
You either need to do, like, you kinda did with me, which wasn't ideal, but just interview as a group at a meeting, and it can be a special meeting or a regular meeting, or you have to do two, um, two at a time, or, you know.
This is where the committee concept comes in, I think, isn't it?
And you could have a, have a committee to do the interviews and recommendations.
Could we potentially, and I'm actually talking to the four of you, could we potentially extend an extension, or offer an extension to Tammy for a period of time, and then inside that window, advertise for a prosecutor and let her kind of vet and bring us a recommendation of three to interview?
No.
No, I can't?
I don't wanna vet.
You don't want to vet anybody? Understood? Okay, that's fine.
With the exception of her vetting something.
Yes.
I like you.
Okay, okay.
I like the idea. So the concept in that, I. Our relationship with Tammy as we figure out how to hire a prosecutor.
Yeah.
That is something, I did hear you say you, you don't necessarily wanna do the prosecution, correct? Is that what I got out of your statement?
I don't love prosecuting. I.
I just wanted to clarify.
I love Tiffany, and I enjoy, and you've got a great court, so I don't mind it at all. I don't mind it. Um, and, and I would be glad to keep doing it if that's what, but I don't see that as probably in your best interests, so.
Thank you for that. And I don't want you to do something you don't wanna do.
Oh, it's not that I don't want to, but, I mean, really, there was one, um, one court day, and it was December twenty-second or twenty-third, um, so it really doesn't count, but I really should've just phoned it in. I mean, I could've, if I'd really been thinking, I could have zoomed it. Um, but for me to drive from Unicourt sometimes is maybe not real economical.
So what if we, what if we offer, again, I'm not talking to you then.
Okay. I can leave, I can leave.
No, 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 you're good.
You don't need to leave.
Um, what if we, so I was just thinking about six months, but it's in like July or something, what if we just extend it to the end of twenty twenty-two? Offer to extend to the end of twenty twenty-two, and in the meantime, do a search for a prosecutor? And then, because if we say six months, then by the time.
Another six months.
Let's just, if we extend it through the end of the calendar year.
Calendar or the fiscal year, fiscal year.
In June.
June, and the new fiscal year starts in July. So that's what I was thinking with July, with the new fiscal year.
That's what I was thinking.
Get us through what everything that they need to do on the, the budgets and everything, and then when we start in July with a new fiscal year, you can then have some, they'll have more free time, I'm assuming. And then figure out how you want to divide that out.
That's a racial question, let's ask her. Fiscally, this could be an issue.
Yeah. And it. And then I guess if we need to, we could always divide it.
We could always.
Essentially, I was aiming for a longer route than shorter.
With you two.
Recommend through the end of fiscal year.
Say from here on out. But, uh, for, I would say for the foreseeable future, however, um, fiscally, we need to consider our options, I.
I, I think that the thought at this point is extending the contract sort of as is through the fiscal year. Right, or the, the thought is that it would be easier on you guys if we did that. That way, we're not taking time away as you work on the budget and finish the budget process. Assuming that would help you, I don't, I don't know if.
It might, the, the prob, it depends on what route you wanna go, but if, if you're gonna wanna have several meetings and interviews during the budget process, that might be a little complicated, but we'll figure out a way to do it.
Well, then. We can just pivot to Aaron's original. The calendar year.
Didn't hear it, but, you can.
If we extend it through the end of the calendar year, I mean, it's half a fiscal year, it's through the end of the calendar year, and that seems like by the time we're ready to have to renegotiate is like October, November, December, fourth quarter is usually.
Those are actually the, but it's not our fourth quarter though, it's only our second quarter, so actually, those are the slowest months of the year.
Well, that would be best.
That was really my point, that, that period of time is, you don't have as many things going on.
Right, yeah.
Tammy, would that work for you? Would you be interested in that?
Okay, let me make sure I understand, you're talking about extending my contract is as is through the calendar year, but in the meantime, um, go, you could go ahead and hire some, a prosecutor to start in October? Okay. I'm thinking my contract is, um, flex, I mean, my contract's always flexible, but I just wanna make sure you, yeah.
Can you, can you put something in there if they find a prosecutor in the meantime?
Yeah.
That it's just renegotiated, or? Or taken out?
I can just word it as prosecution services is needed. Because again, if you do, if you can't be there, I'd be recovering that person and prosecute services is needed, and then, then when you don't need them, I wouldn't provide them, but, okay, and you, but you don't wanna advertise for a, for a city attorney?
I mean, I don't think at this time, if we have somebody we need to vet right now, then we have a lead.
Just prosecutor.
So just advertise for a prosecutor, right, not for the city attorney, but the question is yes, I'm on board with that.
Works for me.
Everybody sees me, okay.
So I will, here's what I would do, I'll bring you a contract that was just probably exactly like what you've already signed, with two changes. One, I'll put prosecution services is needed, change the date to the end of the year, and then I'll put a termination, um, date as, uh, I think I've got thirty days, but I'm gonna put seven, so that it gives you flexibility to, so that like you want someone to start at the next meeting, and you don't want it to be me, then, so, those will be the changes, I think, and we'll just give that to you next meeting.
Well, thank you.
That's a good idea.
That for us?
I wanna be.
And I'll review my contract for you. Actually, I remember saying to you guys, you might wanna have Matt or someone review my contracts, that is always an option too.
I just wanna make the statement that I wanna see you continue as our attorney, and we wanna be flexible and try to help navigate through the having an assistant attorney or prosecutor, you know, assistant attorney slash prosecutor in addition to, you know, reduce that burden while maintaining as our city attorney. That's just me, that's not, I'm not speaking for the commission, I'm speaking for my team.
Thank you.
I agree, I, I agree as well.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion of that item?
I just have one question.
I have a question. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
That's one thing that I, I think that I said to Sarah or the mayor, you're the two people I talked to before I showed up for the first meeting, and it was like, I gotta talk to Bob first to make sure that he, that he wants me to come.
Yeah, but it's not interim then, is that what I'm understanding, till the end of the year?
Yeah, I guess.
Would it be interim?
It wouldn't be an interim.
Just move to a straight contract that's renewed.
I assume that's how.
I mean, you can always, it can always be canceled later, or, I mean, I don't see any reason not to, myself.
I would strike the word interim if everybody's okay with that.
I like.
Okay, I'll bring you a contract and Bob can review it.
Get somebody, yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Uh, okay.
Was there a motion in there anywhere? Somewhere.
Was there a motion or is there this direction to staff, which is all of you?
I think we hired a city attorney.
To a motion directing, um, the interim city attorney to prepare a contract as discussed.
I make a motion for the city attorney to prepare a contract as discussed.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor?
Yep.
Justin?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Okay, I think we survived that one. I'll move adjourned.
A second. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am.
Aaron? Yes.
Do you have a public works meeting next? I don't know if there's anybody who wants to leave, if you don't have a, that's okay, we won't be offended if you need to go home.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am.
Aaron? Yes.
Consideration action on consent agenda. Motion to approve.
A second. Aaron?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yep.
Justin?
Yes.
Autumn?
Yes, ma'am.
Public appearances, petitions, remonstrance, communications, and personal appearances, anybody have anything? Last call, nope. Consideration discussion of possible action to approve purchase of sewer jetting equipment from Key Equipment in the amount of $10,057.45, half of which to be paid utilizing capital improvement sales tax, other half to be reversed through a O-MAG equipment grant.
It's a grant that Chad reached out to O-MAG about, and he's planning on purchasing new jetter hose and a bunch of different nozzle, several different nozzles for the jetter, dearly needed, we have the money to pay for the half, and they're going to reimburse 50% of the cost, so it's a pretty good deal.
Wonderful, thanks to Chad for that.
Chad did a great job.
He does do a great job.
Motion to approve.
A second. Justin got that one.
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Autumn?
Ma'am.
I'll adjourn.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Autumn? Yes.
Yes. Thanks, everybody.